Have Mayor Brusma, he has, he had requested an excuse absence for tonight. Objection, okay. So first item was just informed by a city manager that the applicants are not going to be here until six thirty.
That's correct. I don't know if that was what Trevor and they had worked out before he left, but apparently that's what the, they had arranged to come just for the six thirty meeting.
Okay.
Maybe so they only give a presentation once, I'm not sure. Sorry about that. I didn't really notice it until this afternoon when I saw the email correspondence between the Community Development Department, so.
Maybe we could get some of the questions asked for the time being and once the six thirty meeting starts, we could.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. We could, if you guys wanted to like list the questions that you have and then.
Okay. So first item on business revolving loan fund application. Oh, I'm sorry. First item on business revolving loan fund, fund application.
I'll turn this over to Jameson.
So I think the first one is Von Vinos, is that correct? Sorry, I'm still trying to pull my.
Yeah, Von Vinos.
Okay. So I think as you can see in the application that was attached, they are looking for money to do some improvements to their outside area and security.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, or Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Julia Hart just arriving, thank you very much. The also, the other thing that they're using the money for is to do some insulation of the roof on the inside.
Oh, that's the inside, okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking outside.
They've, they've got some insulation issues with the inside ceilings. And so they're hoping to cut down on noise and that sort of thing and, and their power bill. Which, as you know, we are all conscious of.
And they did initially request the thirty thousand dollars and the Community and Economic Development Commission recommended twenty five thousand dollars.
So is the, is a request for twenty five thousand?
Uh, correct. That's what's been, um, that is what, I believe that's what's been recommended by the.
Yes.
The mission.
Cause I, I show the thirty thousand.
Sorry, just a second. Let me just get through here. Oh, yeah, I guess, yes, thirty thousand dollars was the recommendation. I apologize for that. So I think they had initially requested more than that.
Counsel, any more questions?
So I, I'm, I'm sorry. So they requested twenty five, not thirty?
Oh, they requested, actually their application shows they requested thirty, so I don't think we did reduce that one.
I believe they only reduced the, the special.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, I didn't do a very good job of looking through these since I wasn't involved in the preparation. Yes, that's why we're having a study session, huh?
Okay. So it is, okay.
Yeah, their request was four thirty and it looks like their recommendation was four thirty.
Can I ask a real quick question? Sorry, the, the application sponsor has Roger Hazard on behalf of Von Vinos. Is Von Vinos Incorporated in any way?
I think it's an LLC.
And so why, why is, why is this being awarded directly to Roger Hazard personally?
I believe, I don't, I wasn't involved in any of this, but I thought, I was under the impression that Trevor and you guys had worked that out and that we were doing it under the individual because it was in case it wasn't paid or something?
No, I think it's, I think it's not to be paid to the orig, excuse me.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, I believe that it's to be paid to, through the business. The check is to the business. It's not, it shouldn't be a personal check to the, to the applicant. It should be to the, to the actual business.
The resolutions by, specifies Roger Hazard.
Yeah, and that, I, I don't believe that's correct.
Those were all created by Trevor before he left. So that entire package was created by Trevor before he left. So I was under the assumption that they were created with the standards that you guys had put into place. So if I need to go back and redo them, then I suppose, I think all three of these ones are like that, so.
I think you can just amend this resolution.
Okay.
By Von Vinos as opposed to Roger Hazard.
When did we do the last, the, the first ones? Was it in March?
February, April?
She thinks May twenty eighth, she said.
Is, no, when we, when we approved the other, um, was, that's when you guys approved the addition to the funds. But you had approved the three other.
Been the previous?
Loans at a different time. Hold on, I'm just going through.
So if they're all like that, do we have to amend each?
I'm, I'm taking Sonia Anderson's one as well, uh, cause it specifies Sonia Anderson.
Tailored footwear, I believe.
It's probably a good idea to amend the resolution to make sure that if you're paying it to the business, not the individual, it's probably good to amend that.
So when I'm looking at the agenda packet for the previous one, it does have the individual's name, but perhaps that was corrected.
We didn't correct the resolutions be, in the last time that they were approved. So if they, they must be, need to be revised. I'm sorry.
These can all be amended on the record. It's fine if you want to do that, just specify the business as opposed to the actual person.
The ones that we've already issued a contract on though, we can't, can we make adjustments on those ones if they were done incorrectly?
Is the contract with the individual then?
I haven't, I haven't seen the contract, so I, I thought you and Trevor were doing that part together. Oh.
Destitution of money goes where it's supposed to go. I think legally you have to have that specified in either resolution or the contract or both.
And just as another note too, I just noticed, um, when I was reading through it, it says Roger with a D, G E R. And he spelled his signature and wrote his signature as Roger without the D. So there's a couple of little.
Few mistakes.
If you, if you note well, typographical, I would suggest. But you can see on his application there that's on the board that he writes it with a J. So I don't know. I think it says a typographical in our resolution. It's not in the, um, applica, it's not in the official resolution. It's not in the resolution.
You can amend the resolution to specify the business and then you can simply go ahead and change the contracts to correspond with the resolution itself.
Right. So it looks like we will, will need to do that with all of the previous ones as well then.
Probably a good idea.
Just to make sure that we're all in sync on that. I think that's a good idea. But.
Any, anything further?
In any case, I think this is, is a worthwhile, um, resolution and, and use of money. And the, Mr. Hazard has been in the community for a good long time. He's a steady, steady business person and has expanded his business to, to meet the needs and wants of the community. So I, I believe that awarding him this amount is a, um, is well justified and will really both help the community and, and I'm sure he'll be a good person paying it back. This is so we can do some more good stuff further down the line. So at that, I'd like to make a motion to, um.
We're in a study session.
Oh, we're in a study session. I, I'm gonna go over here and make me a note when we get to the action part.
There you go. I, I have a question. Um, so the collateral offered, he, he listed the building, the property. Is, is that, we're using that as, as a collateral, I take it?
I believe each of these loans individually was, uh, analyzed by the Community and Economic Development Commission. Some of them do have collateral requirements and some of them don't. Actually, I think all of these may have.
Yeah. It seemed like they'd all have to have a collateral.
So, so I have a, a question for the attorney. Um, if, if the building slash property is under his personal name and we do the contract under his business name, can he still use that as collateral?
So just to correct me if I'm wrong, you have not seen any of the, any of the contracts for any of the revolving. Okay. So my, my under, my impression when Trevor left was that, sorry, I hate that we're doing this on the record, but I guess it doesn't matter. Um, in fact, he gave me notes that once they were approved by council that he had a contract prepared, sent to you. And then it was sent back to us in order for us to issue the, the, um, the payment through finance. That's not what happened. Okay. There's no possibility that somebody else in your office got it. Okay, thank you.
Got you.
But we will need to bring the other ones back to council to have those. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Question. Is this because it's an LLC or?
It, it corresponds to whoever receives the money for the purposes of this, so it, it uses our, to do this, it applies. They have their business, they receive the business. If you give it to them quickly, then it is going to the business, so the account is off, and so. I didn't know we were using ARPA on that for this.
Oh, yeah.
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 Okay, let's, uh, we don't have any further questions on that item. Let's move on to the next one.
I have a question, Deputy Mayor. So during session, during a regular, um, session, we, once we get to this item, we will move to amend before we move to approve.
Yeah. My understanding.
And then.
And then, okay. Well, thank you.
So item B revolving loan fund application, uh, let's just say tailored footwear.
Ms. Warner again.
The application is in the packet for you. They, um, also requested, let me think, let me see. I think they requested.
Forty five.
Thirty five, and I believe that we're giving them.
Forty five?
Forty five.
I see they requested fifty.
Yeah, they requested fifty.
Fifty, and we're giving them forty five.
Counsel, any questions on this item?
Question. When the, um, when you guys, uh, lower the amount, what's your protocol on that?
I believe the community and, and Ms. Hart might be better one to answer some of these questions since she's on the committee. But I believe the committee reviewed the applications, uh, weighed the merits of the applications and then went back to the applicant with, um, with a suggestion for funding. Um, and then they made the recommendation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's different stipulations, just, um, a different award amount.
I have a question too.
Right, Counsel.
So are, are we able to drop the amount that they're requesting? And if so, what, could we just amend that as well? And then make a motion to have this amount for this specific, like a specific business to go back to the development, Economic and Development Commission for further discussion?
Um, counsel can do that. Counsel can amend any of these resolutions. So just like you're amending the name. Um, just keep in mind that the amount recommended by the council right, or by the commission right now is equal, equivalent to the funds that we've set aside through ARPA. So if you want to do an increase, then we need to simultaneously increase the amounts allocated, um, from the ARPA funds, but.
Any further questions?
I have another question. So for this one, I do see, give me one second. I do see it says it is for inventory purchases and advertising, so.
I believe if, if you recall, she also had some other things that she was, oh, I'm still looking at the wrong one.
I think she had a sign that.
That she wanted some signage. She had some, some bills that came from during the, were residual from the, uh, COVID. So some of the money was going towards that. If you recall, she talked about that quite, I believe you were there.
Says remodeling, containing, painting and flooring repair.
And then she is also in the process of trying to find a different location because of rent cost. So the money is, she's got it divided up kind of different ways, but it was going to be a great, great help to her to keep her business in business.
Oh, actually, no. Yeah, she, she did say that what she is using this for is the sign and some updates to the inside and to pay off the credit card. So yes, she did say that she's purchased inventory in advance and a credit card. And that part of this money will be used to pay those.
Right.
Those costs of inventory.
And again, that was related to, to COVID, you know, the pandemic and bills that came up. She's just trying to get back on her feet.
Any other questions from counsel? I have one question. Um, she doesn't list any collateral. How are we guaranteeing that this loan will be paid back?
Let me see if I have to open that one.
It looks like page, page four of her application is completely blank.
Um, that was supposed to be filled in. Um, I'm don't, not sure why we're seeing it. Um, with the blanks in it, cause what is that one? There's her assets. Looks like collateral is, is maybe her home.
Okay.
Something I, I do recall is, I remember Sydney saying that they were holding her off back because she didn't have a lot of the information. And she didn't have a business plan and she was missing a lot of the documentation.
And I think, I think that that was when we were gonna, when we came, came to this place, uh, came to this point to prove it or not. Um, we were going to maybe table it until we could get those other info, other information. I think that was our, our, our job to do at this point. Um, I know she was, she was working with Sydney and also a couple of members of the, uh, commission to, to fill in some of those, to create that business. She was having a little difficulty with that. So I would, I would suggest that we not approve this one tonight, but, um, table it until we can get that other information to answer your questions about, um, what the collateral is on that. Cause I'm, I, I'm sure she had said, but it's not written down, so might be better to go back.
Yeah, I just, I see it as an incomplete application at this point. Uh, Counsel, any more questions on this item? All right, let's move on. Item C revolving loan fund application for the special LLC, Mr. City Manager.
Uh, turn this over to Ms. Warner.
And this one is for the twenty five thousand dollars and this is, um, I, I think a new business that they're requesting some funding for. Um, and they do have collateral, um, on this one as well.
I, I see fifteen thousand.
Yeah, their initial request, I believe, was, was.
Twenty, I believe, wasn't it?
Was twenty and the, the committee recommended. Uh, actually, it looks like maybe they even requested twenty five thousand. Is that this one?
I'm just.
Yeah, their initial request was, was for, was for twenty five thousand. If you look at their application.
About the.
On page four.
I don't see that application on, on here. Was it maybe skipped or added later on?
It's in the folder, so you can grab.
She did request, uh, twenty five thousand loan for three year with interest of three, three percent. Let me see what else says.
I'm wondering if the council would be amenable if we, since there are questions on these, I, I hate to do this to the applicants, but if we could just push all three of these out. Um, I do have concerns because I, I was under the impression that Ben had seen those contracts. So I do apologize, but I'm wondering if the council would be amenable to just tabling all three of the applications until the next meeting. But it's up to you. So I know like Von Vinos is a well-established business. So if you wanted to go ahead and, and do one, that's fine, but.
I, I just with Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Get the mister and deputy. I think maybe we ought to do that just to make sure that we have all of the right information, just, just to be on the safe side. Because this is a lot of money we're talking about and we do want to help these businesses. But we don't want to create problems for them down the line and we don't want to create any problems for ourselves as, uh, with this loan program.
As a point of procedure two of council is, is, uh, gonna request additional either funds or, or award less or more, change a dollar amount than what the commission recommended. Then that has to be a recommendation they send back to the commission. Or is approved by the council at that point.
I don't, I don't think, going, if it's all right, anybody else have a comment before I jump in again?
Go ahead and I have a question, but you might, I think you're getting at.
But I think, I think you're right. I think we don't really, I, with the amount of money that we have right now, I think we're okay to not change the amounts. Um, the amounts that, that we agreed to, the, the commission agreed to, I think are, are proper and right. And, and, and well researched as far, from our point of view. Um, I do think with the technical aspect of it is where our, our glitch is. And I would suggest that we do table these until we can get that worked out with maybe those amendments that we also talked about as far as like making sure these checks are being written to the business and not the person.
Just, no problem to table the vote, but just keep in mind they are coming to present tonight.
I could try contacting them real quick so that they don't, um, show up if, if that's something council wants to do, but.
Yeah, I, I do have one question. So it seems like we've been dropping them all by five thousand. Is there a reason why we dropped the special down by ten thousand?
Because of the amount of money that we had available to us at that time.
Okay, yeah, cause this owner called me the other day actually themselves to, to, to my work phone and, and had mentioned that they had uh, requested a specific amount, but they didn't know why they had been dropped so much lower than what they expected, which I understand because it's certain amount of money that we've allotted to, but, um, I don't know, I just wanted to figure out. There's a specific, you know, if there's.
If I remember correctly from our last meeting, it was in chronological order when they were submitted and that was the last one submitted. So they got what was left of the funds.
Okay.
I'm correcting if I'm wrong, but I think that's what was discussed at the last meeting.
So, but I also want to point out that we do have that retreat coming up next Monday. And we are gonna revisit some of our ARPA funds at that time as well, which is gonna be before our next meeting. So it may make sense to just, like I said, just kind of hold off on these. I hate to make the applicants wait. Um, but.
My, my question is, do we wanna ask them questions tonight and table them individually? Or do we want to table all three of them before we ask them questions?
I would like to talk to them and, you know, we might as well do that since they're already coming. And if we want to vote yes on one, but the other two, you know, find out more information, then.
I see what you mean.
Tonight might be the night to do it.
So let's take, uh, one at a time and not cancel them and maybe ask them questions.
Totally fine.
I think, I think the other thing too, if you don't mind, um, is maybe not make that vote tonight. Because we, because we do want to make, you know, we do want to take this back.
On any of them?
I, 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 I really feel like we should make sure that the, the contract and the resolution match. And that whatever, you know, cause they don't right now.
Um, I actually concur with Counselor Hart. I, I, I'm going to abstain from making, um, any vote on these until it goes to Mr. Riley and it's on his desk. Can we actually review these thoroughly? Before it gets back. It is a lot of money and I want to make sure that we're making conscious decisions and on the money that we're gonna be allocating.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
I, yeah, I, not to interrupt, I'm sorry. I am slightly uncomfortable with the fact that the contracts haven't been reviewed by the attorney. And so I was not, because I wasn't aware of that, I would really prefer us not passing anything else, but, um, like I said, it is up to the council, so. Right. Oh, you did look at the contracts for the other ones though. Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Excellent. Well then, let's, look, I think, are we in agreement then that we just should, you know, I don't see any reason why we can't hear why they want the money.
Yeah.
Ask them, ask them questions.
And I, you know, a few questions. I don't think that we want to get in the weeds with questions because we only, you know, have certain minimum time, but, um, but at least let them make their presentation since they are on their way. Um, get that on the record and it's not, I, I don't believe that we're planning on, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we're, I, I don't think that we're going to plan on denying them any money. I think we're just trying to make sure that the paperwork matches what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay.
I have, does that make sense?
Yeah, I have a question. So being in those meetings, I do recall Sydney saying these will all be taken to council and council can choose to modify the amounts and ask questions and change things. So that's something that I have heard.
That is, that is part of what our, our job is as a council.
Yes, we can do that as council, recommend a different amount. So we'll, we'll treat this, uh, one at a time and we'll see where we're at. So any, uh, further questions on this item? Moving on to the letter D, letter C and movement event. Um, I think this is Counselor Froston.
Yes. All right, this is my agenda item. So, um, council members, uh, I am bringing forth, um, uh, this, uh, event, um, along with, in partnership with Save the Children. Um, and we're trying to plan it for the summer. And I spoke to Chief Layman about this a little bit and, uh, really the objective of this and which is also listed in the summary is, um, to create space for children ages zero to twelve and their parents, caregivers to promote healthy living literacy and connections. So really this is gonna be a community event, um, open to all community. We want to partner with the police, uh, uh, the law enforcement to maybe do some dodgeball with the kids, uh, maybe some, um, uh, partner with the firefighters. Um, and, uh, also looking at a dunk booth. So if my fellow council members are so brave enough to do a dunk a council or dunk the mayor, we're gonna be doing some, things like that. And then also inviting, um, the library to come in and really speak about their program with, um, with their, their new edition, um, which we went to the ribbon cutting to, uh, a year ago, actually almost in the summer. Um, and, um, we're going to be also collaborating with, um, uh, the boys' basketball team for the high school volleyball. I'm really just making this a very community-driven and a community-led event for, um, the children and their families. And, um, the plan is to host this on ten in August, right before the, the students go back into school. Um, and life starts back up again, uh, before the fall for families. Um, and the reason why it's coming to you all is because, um, I would, my ask is, uh, since this is a community-led event in partnership with Save the Children, if, um, uh, the ask is for, uh, council, uh, to vote on waiving the rental fee for the community center for this event. Um, the times would be around, uh, five to maybe eight PM. Um, that, I think we're thinking of hosting this maybe on August fifteenth, which is the tentative date. Things can change depending on how tonight goes. Uh, but, um, just really wanted to share the plans for the summer and really organizing a community-driven event for the kids and for their families and then really just getting everybody involved in something, um, this August. Um, so I will be looking forward to it. Um, Save the Children is also going to be, um, hosting, um, one of the sessions. I think the idea is for it to be broken down into stations. So if y'all remember during PE back in elementary where you had like different stations and you'd have about twelve minutes per station and then you'd kind of transition over onto the next. So we would have a good, maybe two hours of just activities, learning, connections, motivation and really getting, um, you know, just something centered around healthy living. Um, so that is the reason why I'm bringing this forward today to really just share, um, the objective of this potential event. And, um, and then again, bringing it here to council vote, um, with the hope that we can waive the, the community, uh, centry fee.
All right, counsel, any questions? Where, Counselor Froston, Mr. Peter?
Do you plan on doing more than just one events or making a yearly thing or something like that?
Um, it definitely has potential for it to be repeated depending on the outcome. I mean, we're planning to share this during the school board, um, uh, uh, public comment as well and really just getting the, you know, the, the community motivated to come out and do something for them with the families, uh, right before their return to school. So yes, if we have a good turnout in the community, I know the community. right before their return to school. So yes, if we have a good turnout in the community, I know the community really needs more events like the, like these. And really coming together. And, you know, in the midst of everything, there's so many differences, but we do how, you know, hold common ground in, in, in that we want to, you know, invest in our youth, we want to invest in our families, and we want to form, you know, healthy partnerships with everybody who's involved in community. Like our law enforcement, you know, like the basketball team, like the firefighters, and obviously, you know, even getting us all out there as well. So to your question, I hope we can repeat this.
Counselor Hart, you got something?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what is the typically the rental fee for the community?
Um, I.
Don't have it off the top of my head.
I don't have it. I think it was fifteen dollars an hour. It's a, it's a low amount, but when the chief brought, or sorry, the city manager brought this up to me as Counselor Froston had reached out, I said, it sounds like a great thing that the city, like the city would want to sponsor. And so, you know, if we do it as a sort of city of Sunnyside sponsored event, then we don't have to charge anything because it's, it's a, it's a city sponsored event. And kind of to, to Mr. Beeler's question, I do think that the council has the opportunity to sponsor events that are put on by the city like this. But the staff, we don't really have the ability to determine which ones those are. So I think the best thing is for it to come to council when we have a new one like this. But yeah, if you guys wanted to establish that there was something that was going to be recurring, that's always within the council's authority to do that.
So this, this could be considered, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Any session?
I was just going to say, so this could be considered like some sort of a pilot, kind of a test to see. So people, when you're talking about literacy and healthy programs for youth and so forth in conjunction with Save the Children, I'm not familiar with that organization probably as well as I ought to be. But I'm thinking the people who are in the city, like Yakima Valley Library Services, you talked about having the mobile library there. Also probably, you know, signing kids up for library cards and families as well. People like Sunnyside Unites who do a lot of, you know, they do the programs with, let's say empowering parents. It's a, it's a parent, it's a parent program. I'm looking to the chief, I just.
They have a couple of programs.
They have a couple of programs out there, yeah. So I was just thinking that those kinds of things, there's already organizations in the community. And I think what you're talking about is really cool because we can bring them together as a back to school activity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so this is just really the initial pitch, but I mean, we're going to do an ask for volunteers. And then, of course, if you all have any ideas, please bring them forth because this can definitely evolve into something, you know, bigger and more robust and even that much more fun for, for our families. Yeah.
I have one question. Are they a nonprofit?
They are a nonprofit.
Council, any other questions?
Yeah, I have one question. So this would technically be classified under class A for a community center. So technically it wouldn't like be waived because since the class A, it's already all zero, 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 zero. I have the amounts right in front of me.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you think we could maybe reword the wave instead of like wave, just write classify under class A? Because the word wave will open up a lot of doors and people or other organizations can think, oh, I want to waive my fee too.
I actually, I do agree with you, and I think that the intention was to go ahead and move it to a class A so that we could do that. And so I think if you guys would amend the motion.
Okay.
I think you could probably do that.
And I, I think you're right. If we make it a city-end endorsed program, that, that keeps us in the, in the, in the narrow path that we should be with with spending that kind of money.
Cool.
All right.
Awesome.
Well, there being no further business to come before council, and without objection, I adjourn this meeting at six oh five P M. Break time.
You're speechless.
Good evening, everyone. I hereby call this meeting of Sunnyside City Council regular meeting, June tenth, two thousand twenty-four, to order at six thirty P M. For the record, everyone in council is present, for the exception of Mayor Barstman, he asked for an excuse absence. Council, any objection?
No objection.
Thank you.
We should let him, let him off the hook since he's celebrating a new baby, new grandbaby.
Well, Mayor Barstman, you're excused. Also, for the record, all members of staff that are supposed to be here are present, for the exception of Fire Chief Hallbrick and Police Commander Gusbey. In vocation, do we have anybody here for invocation? Please stand and remain, stand for pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful that the city council can go, come together and to discuss some things that are important for our wonderful city of Sunnyside. And we ask thee the heavenly truth to be here, that there'll be understanding and clear lines and to give them the support that they need to know that we appreciate the service that they all made. And we think so we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's get started with public comment. Got my list here. Aaron Estrada. Citizens are advised, they must limit their remarks to counsel of three minutes. Counsel may refer items to staff and review and or research for presentation at future council meetings.
I came as a representative of New Hope Church. I don't know if many of you have heard, but we're trying to host a car show at the community center, and we're trying to really get the community involved. It's, you know, our church is hosting it, but it's not necessarily to gain more members for just our church. It's mainly to show that our churches, they're willing to help the community and get the community together. With that being said, we're just waiting on a couple of things to be approved by our city departments, and we just wanted you guys' support as well as one of our events that we're trying to get approved by the city is a two-step competition. And a two-step competition is where a car is able to show their performance without racing, and it would be controlled on, and they'll be parked and everything, so it'd be supervised, and we're just asking for a certain time limit where they're able to rev up their engines, you know, for a little bit and in a safe environment where, like I said, it's not street racing and it's not endangering the, the public on public roadways. So I just ask for you guys' support, and if you guys are willing to attend, that'd be amazing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. When, what day was the car show?
The twentieth of July.
Twenty eighth.
The twentieth? And thank you for your, for your comments. We'll get back to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next member I have Juan Moreno, please. Next one I have is Maribel Gomez. Are you here for the revolving loan, right? Not so much public comment?
Somebody to be here at six thirty.
Okay, good. And I'll take you out public comment, and yeah, we'll call you here in a bit. Adrian Mancias, please state your name and city of residency.
Hello, everybody. My name is Adrian Mancinas. I actually live in Grandview for the reason that I used to live right downtown and it's pretty dangerous. I mean, it's a lot of gang activity, a lot of drug use. A lot of people out there just acting crazy, man. And that's part of the reason why I came to speak to y'all about supporting youth soccer. And let's see if I can email the mayor or any other emails that I find regarding, I'm going to send you guys a schedule. Hopefully you guys can come out and check out these kids that I see a lot of them that got a big future ahead of them. I know there's a lot of kids that have gotten scholarships out of Sunnyside for soccer. I haven't heard back from the district yet, but I know that just from hearing about it in the public, it's probably one of the biggest people, kids that have received scholarships of any sport. So that's definitely worth looking into for all of you guys. Soccer is huge here. It is huge. There's nothing else like soccer in this town, and there's a lot of kids that are making a life, making their life better because of it. Going to C V C, the recent kid just got a full ride scholarship. He's a junior in high school. He got a full ride scholarship to the University of Washington through soccer. So it's time for us to really look at that and support it as much as we can. I also want to thank the police department for answering the call about a suspicious person at the last youth soccer game. I think it was a Sunday or Saturday over at the Sun Valley. I know that a lot of parents were really grateful because you guys went out there, I think it was like five minutes. There was a very suspicious person out there in the parking lot, just acting a fool, and it looked like he was on drugs. And I know that the kids felt safe having you guys out there. So thank you guys for doing that. And I'll definitely send you an email. Maybe you guys could swing by whenever those soccer games are out there and just make your presence known. I mean, it's, it's pretty comforting just to know, you know, that you guys responded so quickly. So I, I had other stuff, but I've been so busy. I know you guys, I don't know if you guys remember me from last time. And I'm just a big, big advocate about soccer, and I would really like to, I'm going to start connecting with y'all, sending some emails out and stuff like that regarding, you know, different ways that we could all support it. My club, Levels F C, is always going to be there to support the youth. We're, we're trying to build up a little bit more adult presence. We do have about fourteen adults currently helping us. And we're, we're trying to reach out to the community. I just became a Williams Cleveland National Number as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm all about the community, man. I know I said I moved to Grandview, but this is my hometown. And I'm going to do everything I can to help out the kids because I know, I, I know they need it in this town, just with other things that just recently happened. You know, it's time for all of us, not just you as leaders, but us as citizens of this community to, to come together and help out. So thank you guys for your time, and I'll be back next time.
Thank you, Mr. Mancias. Okay, let's move on to the next consent agenda. Or, I'm sorry. I have one more. I, I recognize the name, Sonia Anderson. You're also here for the loan, right? Sorry, I skipped that without even asking. Okay, consent agenda, minutes, minutes of April first, two thousand twenty-four workshop. Minutes of April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, special meeting, study session. Minutes of the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. Payable vouchers, approved payable, payable vouchers, numbers one, one, nine, five, oh, seven through one, one, nine, five, one, four, and wire transfers as listed for seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents for the period ending in May, two thousand, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Claim out, claim vouchers, approved, approved claim vouchers, number one, oh, nine, three, six, two, three, one, oh, nine, four, ten, and wire transfers as listed for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, fifty-four cents for the period ending on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Approved claim vouchers, number one, oh, nine, four, eleven through one, oh, nine, four, forty, and wire transfers as listed one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents for the period ending on May first, twenty twenty-four. Council members, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda for discussion?
Was that last one, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
I think you said twenty-four.
Did I? Okay. Yeah, period ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Um.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Yeah, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would like to, I just have a quick question on the minutes from May eighth. Now, if we need to pull them, I think it's, it's, I think there's a, there was a motion that Hart was, was excused for the May eighth on the work study, I think, and Ripley and Mr. Beeler, Counselor Beeler and Counselor Ripley were also excused. But I saw in there that I was making motions, so I'm wondering if there was just an oversight on the, in the in the May eighth one.
Yes, there probably, it probably is.
Yeah, because I, I think.
April eighth?
April eighth.
So you were gone, but you're making motions, huh?
Yeah, it says I was excused, but I was, I was there. In another spot, Ripley was.
Was there, but I wasn't there.
That's, and I think that was the confusion.
Uh huh.
So if we could just.
Then for Hart, it's not checked on either side.
I'll revise these if he.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Counselors, anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to pull transaction number sixty seventy-two and transaction number sixty fifty-nine.
Ms. Horner?
For the Yakima Valley Tourism, it was just in reimbursement, it looks like.
Um, oh, so for sixty seventy-two first, sorry, I went.
Correct.
Uh, yes, that's part of their, their contract through LTAC for tourism promotion services. So that's, was a reimbursement for those.
And even like the single the myofotography that have come out?
Yeah, because though they go and they do photography for the actual like Yakima Valley Tourism pamphlet, so it's not necessarily part of that. That event setup or anything for them, but just the tourism booklet.
Okay, and then I have sixty fifty-nine.
Which was the painting of the pool house. So that was, I believe that was.
That's part of the R C O that we paid, R C O, then will reimburse us back once we complete that grant.
Okay, and that's just the, the pool house interior and exterior, just painting, just the paint?
Yes.
Inside and out, that's the amount? Okay.
Yep. Another part of that was of the R C O grant was also the, some tree removals and some pruning that was already done. This was the last of that grant.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your questions, Counselor?
That's fine.
Anyone else? Hearing none, what is the desired counsel on this item?
To approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Beeler and second by Counselor Ripley to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any debate on this item? Hearing none. I'm in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it? Motion is approved. Okay, so let's go to active agenda, revolving loan fund application. Roger Hazard, Bonvino's Bistro and Bakery, Mr. City Manager. I don't see Mr. Hazard here, but I'll turn this over to Ms. Horner.
Um, I can answer questions for the council that they may have on the application, but as we figured out in the study session portion, I wasn't at the meeting, so unfortunately I can't answer many more questions than that.
Counselor?
Move the table of this item.
I second.
Yeah, a motion by Counselor Beeler and a second by Counselor Froston to table this item or further discussion? Or let's table it? Is there any discussion?
No.
No? I'm in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed now? The ayes have it? Okay, item B, revolving loan fund application for Sonia Anderson, Taylor Footwear, this is Mr. City Manager.
I see Ms. Anderson here. If she wants to step up to the microphone, then I'll turn it over to Ms. Horner.
And I actually will just allow you guys to ask questions of Ms. Anderson as you've reviewed the application. I know that you guys had, I believe, a question on collateral on this one potentially. Based on that page four of the application maybe not being correct in the packet that was provided.
Counselors?
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
Should we preface this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because this is what I understood during session. Are we, should we preface this with, with letting them know that we're not going to make decisions on the approval of their loans, or is this going to be a case by case basis? I just wanted to be clear because I heard something different during session.
It's going to be a case by case, case, you know, for each item.
I, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I understood that we were going to let. I I understood that we were gonna let them speak about their application. And on, and explain to them that we are still working a little bit on um finding out. Making sure the resolution that we're maybe passing and the contract information is correct. I I it's, in no way are we talking about, I think at this point, about denying anybody any money. I think we're just got some paperwork, but I think what we wanted to do was hear from you uh how this will in. Uh, help your, your business.
So let's uh open it up.
I guess I'm not understanding. So everything we've done up till now.
Yeah, we just want you to tell us about.
Again.
Was it a waste of time?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Not at.
None, none of what, none of that's on you. We just, we have some paperwork issues we need to take.
We have to.
It doesn't have anything to do with your, your.
Can we all just speak one, one, we don't wanna further confuse her. Can this just come from, from one person, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, so it's, it's, it's no waste of time. Um, we just have to do some cleanup on the paperwork. Um, since you were already on your way here, we're gonna allow it uh for any discussion. If you wanna present your, your item to counsel and counsel at this time would ask any questions and um. See, you know, where we go from there, but um it was discussed in the previous study session that uh we might be tabling these items. Um, so for further discussion.
Okay.
So if you'd like to present us with your, your business idea?
Um, well, you got all my information that I've spent hours filling out.
Okay.
Um. The majority of the loan I'm asking for is to pay off credit card debt and then. Build some more advertising, like your guys' digital board for the city and use it for that. After COVID. Um, I had to use a lot of credit cards to purchase stock. And that interest rate is twenty-six point seven, so this loan I can pay off easily within the three-year period. Um, and that will get me out of debt.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Were you able to submit a business plan?
Um, I went to the meeting and basically all of the ladies there said I didn't need one. Cuz I've been in, Tailored Footwear's been in Sunnyside thirty years. My business plan is to sell shoes.
Okay.
That's what we do.
Okay, and I'm just asking because I did search up the revolving loan fund under the page of the city of Sunnyside. And there is the RLF criteria where all applicants should submit general requirements, business plan, balance sheet, financial projections. And there's a list and the list goes on. And I was just asking because a lot of the other, like, other businesses were able to submit everything. So I was just, I just wanted to know and get some more clarification. That way it's fair for.
I'm not that technically inclined as far as being computer and uploading and all of that.
Okay.
It's, no, go ahead, Al.
I, it seems to me too, I, if I recall from the, the uh discussion following your presentation. Uh, several of the, the commissioners agreed that they would get in touch with you uh to offer some, some help in that area. So I don't believe, I don't believe, you're not in, I don't think you're in jeopardy at all or at risk or anything. I think it's just, they, they just feel like that that needs to be written down. And I think that a couple of commissioners were gonna get ahold of you and maybe help you with that. Um, I think it was uh Ms. Garner and and Ms. Erickson had suggested that they would.
Hmm, well.
But they haven't done it yet, uh, I can tell. So. Uh, and really, as, as far as the council, I, if I could speak, is that I think we're, we just have some issues with our, on our end. So you're.
You. No, okay, um, you say you have some issues uploading some of the documents onto the, onto the website or the online portal?
Just the whole process.
Just the whole process. Is there someone that she could reach out, uh, Ms. Horner at City Hall, maybe yourself?
Technical.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think Sydney was helping with this program. I, I just sort of.
Yeah, she's on vacation.
Yeah.
She would have been there.
Um, but yeah, I can absolutely help you if you wanna reach out to me, but I did wanna know. Um, didn't you guys say that you thought there was collateral, but the application that we had in here was not, it did not indicate that?
Collateral?
So was there collateral in your application?
Um, I believe so. There's three hundred thousand in stock of the shoe store itself. I own my own home and I also own property up on the hill.
I think it just didn't get onto here, so I just wanted to.
See, I uploaded it.
So um I will reach out to you so I can get that corrected for you before we get to the next one, but I think that they're ready to go. Um, once we get that figured out.
Okay, Counsel, further questions?
Um, I'm giving, I'm trying to see how much. Um, you requested how much again? Sorry, I'm trying.
Thousand.
Forty-five? Okay. And the full forty-five will go into paying out off your debt?
Forty, and then the five thousand, um, Sydney and I talked about um advertising, putting more out into it.
Okay, and.
Cause even to, even after thirty years, at least a couple of times a week, people walk in. I didn't know Sunnyside had a shoe store. I've lived here all my life. Yep, we do.
I think one of the, one of the things too, Sonia, Ms. Ms. Anderson, you would um, some of the, the companies that you work with um, contract.
Oh, yes. Um, we have a voucher system with Dairy Gold Plant. Workers come in with a voucher, they purchase their safety boots, and then I bill Dairy Gold. Same with Welch's. Um, all um hospital employees through the whole valley, it doesn't have to be Sunnyside, get ten percent off of their shoes. Along with teachers and any school district employees, I give ten percent off.
So, I just wanted to.
Further discussion, yeah, also, any further questions? What is the, go ahead?
May I make a motion?
Yes.
Um, to send this back to the Development Economic um Commission for review to maybe. Give around twenty thousand.
Pardon?
To give twenty thousand.
She wants to amend the.
So you wanna give her less?
Yeah, and send it back to the Community and Economic Development Commission for further discussion.
Do we make a motion to amend the, the amount first?
And the only reason for, for me that I'm saying that is because it is uh something that happened around, when was the time that you got into that debt? I know it was right after COVID.
I started having to purchase shoes on credit cards cuz people weren't shopping those last, first two years after COVID.
Were you able to qualify for any of the COVID small business grants?
Yes, I got a small one, which paid my rent, which my rent has been going up also.
Okay, and were you only able to get one or were you able to get two?
Yeah, nope. Most of them all went to big business.
Okay, because, okay, and.
Counsel, um, we have a motion on the table to, have a motion to send back to Community, Community Economic Development Committee, Commission. And consider the amount um reduced, is that correct?
Correct, to twenty.
Twenty. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion dies. Due to a second. Um, Counsel.
So I, I think it, uh. I, I, just to make it clean, I'd like to make a motion to just accept uh to approve uh the uh. Forty-five thousand dollars uh revolving loan to Tailored Footwear.
Okay, Counsel, I have a motion to approve Taylor's Footwear. For forty-five thousand, Counsel?
Yes.
Forty-five thousand? Do I have a second?
A order.
Ms. Frosto?
I, I need clarification. Uh, again, once again, I, I'm, we, we discussed this during session. We were not going to approve, but we were gonna hold space for discussion. Mr. Riley, um.
I have a motion to approve, so on the table, so we need a.
One of the orders that comes first.
So we have a.
Okay, okay.
So that being said, we still have a motion on the table to approve forty-five thousand, correct?
Just need a second.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Counselor Hart to approve Taylor Footwear for forty-five thousand. And a second by Counselor Beeler. Uh, any debate?
I want a debate.
Go ahead, Counselor, Vasquez.
The only reason why, I'm, I know you guys are a great place. My grandma would take me to your guys' shoe store all the time. She'd buy me salt waters. I love salt waters. I've been wanting to go to go get some Birkenstocks. I have nothing against the business. It's just the fact that it's mostly so you can pay off that debt from what happened around COVID. And this revolving loan fund, it's something that we're giving to a lot of businesses around our town. And I do want it to be something that can be very beneficial for every business. And something that can help businesses thrive and grow. And you have been a shoe business that's been here for a very long time. Um, but for me, it's just like also business owners make decisions when it comes to their business. And sometimes the, the decisions that we all make are not always the best. And I know that when you were buying stuff, you also knew the rate percentage that you were getting yourself into. So for me, it's just like, I want this to be something that can really help multiple businesses. And the amount that you're, you are asking is a big chunk that can.
But I can pay it back in three years.
Correct, and that makes sense, and I get it, and I fully, fully.
Asking for a handout.
Yeah, before me, it's like that amount can be divided in half and the other half can be beneficial for another business here in Sunnyside.
Sure.
Um, and I just wanted to put, share my perspective.
Counselor Hart?
No. Mr. Beeler.
Mr. Beeler, Counselor Beeler?
Well, we all went through the COVID and my business hurt too. Um, and we do everything we can to save our business. Uh, it was the first time something like that has ever happened. We didn't know what was going on. Sometimes we were told to shut down. It was very hard, especially for a single business. Uh, as far as getting things on credit card, you do that? No, the rates weren't this high when she got this stuff on a credit card. It has gone up if you've been watching the news. She is stuck. There's a lot of businesses going bankruptcy. Because they can't make those payments. This is gonna take that twenty-six percent, twenty-eight percent, and bring it down to two percent. She's already paying. Enough to pay off the loan. This is gonna help a business in Sunnyside greatly and probably save her from shutting her door. That's all I have.
Counselor Ripley?
This is the ARPA Relief Fund that is. This is coming from, and that's what it's for, is to help people, businesses who have been hurt during COVID. But also. The application wasn't finished, and I think we should wait until the application is finished before we approve this. That's just my thoughts.
Further debate?
Well, I, I wanna to say is that her, she was given the impression that she was. Her application was fine the way it was, and that on uh the commission. And the commission forwarded it to the council for approval uh as is. Um, I don't think that there's anything wrong particularly with her application, but I do think that her situation is such. That if with this money, she will be able to get out from under the, the uh, the, the uh debt of the credit cards. Uh, that incurred during the, the pandemic, which like uh Counselor Beeler said, people are still work, still struggling with that. I think that it is uh for a business that's been in this town and is probably a little-known secret. Uh, is, is uh, I think it is worth our time and as uh Ms. Ripley said, uh also. This money, this is what it's for, is to help businesses continue to grow and expand and thrive. And in her case, she needs, in order to thrive, she needs to get out from under this other debt. And she is in a position to take care of that now, so with this loan. And it is a loan, she does pay it back. Um, as uh there's a worry about having more money for other, other uh businesses in town is uh are, as uh. Ms. Horner has said, we do have money that we can transfer from one account to another to, to, to help other businesses. So I, I really think that we need to approve this particular loan. This, she has been working on it. As she said, it was difficult for her to, to do, needed a little bit more technical support, I think, on that, which I think we need to be giving any applicant. Um, and as Jamie's, uh, Ms. Horner said, we, it is available. But I do think we need to vote and, and approve this particular um loan.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I am.
May I add? Um, so uh, Ms. Hart, since you're a part of, 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 of that commission. Um, I really urge that commission to make sure that any application we get to counsel. It's in its full and most completed format. Um, I think moving forward, I will refuse to review any application that is not complete. And if it is a problem with technicalities, then I wanna make sure that um our applicants are being supported. And if they have questions, that we are reaching out to them to make sure that these are completed before they hit these desks. This is a lot of money that we are talking about, y'all. This is ARPA funds. This is uh, we're tapping into federal monies. So I wanna make sure that we are all doing our due diligence. And once these applications are sent over to us by Ms. Renteria, I would uh expect them to be completed.
And, and as uh, as uh, going back to the commission and, and giving that particular message, I think is, is worth voting, absolutely.
Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor.
And for the record, I do just want to clarify that I know that the commission, they get to talk and dialogue and ask every business owner questions. But what I've also been told is that when every business request is brought to counsel, that counsel can modify the amounts. And I just want that on the record.
You are correct, Counselor Vasquez. Um, I myself, uh, I believe we should table this item, but we have a motion and a second on the table. Um, so we need to vote on this, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Riley?
I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay, Counsel, I have a motion, uh, like I said, by Counselor Hart and a second by Counselor Beeler to approve the motion. Um, for the forty-five thousand dollars. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
No.
No. The ayes have it, motion fails. Do. Is there a way we could do a second motion to the table? Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Anderson, I'll reach out to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel, um. Third item is uh item C, revolving loan fund application, Maribel Gomez, Dispatcho LLC. Ms. Gomez is here, I'll turn this over to Ms. Horner.
And I would invite Ms. Gomez to the podium for Counsel to um discuss the application.
Um, Ms. Gomez, if you wanna start with maybe a presentation, you're.
Um, sure. Uh, so Dispatcho is gonna be any restaurant downtown um Sunnyside. It's gonna be located right across from the Central Park. Um, my brother had the restaurant there previously. It was the Chataz. Unfortunately, things didn't go well for him, um, and I decided to go ahead and take over. The, what I'm trying to provide the community is a place to um feel more. Relax, like feel like you're on vacation, um, without feeling that. When you go to a normal restaurant, you know, they take the tab right away. You're done eating and they'll just take the bill and you gotta leave. So here at Dispatcho, we don't want that. We want you guys to eat, enjoy of a good Mexican snacks, um, you know. Um, you know, have a, some soft drinks, some, you know, some drinks that whichever you guys are preference at. And then just relax, have a good time with family or friends. Um, we all know that obviously that like you guys were mentioning, COVID did hit us pretty hard. And for some people, including myself, we went through depression. And, you know, you have to go to clinics, go to doctors for therapy, but I wanna make Dispatcho that therapy for you. To hang out with your friends, your family. Again, just to get together, um, our hours of operations, we wanna do it more of the evenings going up to at least eleven o'clock at night. Um, again, just provided for, uh, on the weekends. Um, maybe not open all day for now, just to see how it works, you know, try it out. Um, the funds that I was trying to request was twenty-five thousand. Um, but again, it was going for buying the furniture because no matter what, I still had to purchase the equipment, had to purchase all the furniture that came with it. Um, along as, um, my employees, you know, I wanna make sure that I have enough to do payroll, at least for a month or two until. The, the restaurant goes up and hopefully again, you know, if everything goes good, you know, um, go from there. But. So I just wanted to see if I can get your guys' support. Um, of course, like I said, it's more of a place to where you guys can just come and relax and have some good authentic snacks and drinks.
Councillor, do we have any, uh, questions for Ms. Gomez?
So yeah, I have a question. From the sounds of it, it's all gonna be for your capital to help you start up everything.
Yes, of course. Yeah, it was, um, it included obviously the business permit, the liquor permit, um, you know, again, the furniture equipment, the inventory. Um, and it's again, a little bit going to the payroll.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ripley?
I gotta ask the tough question.
Go ahead.
If it fails, how are you gonna pay it back?
I do have collateral. So, um, I'm not the only one in this business. I'm actually, um, my sister is joining along with me. So she is actually the owner of One Stop Trucking Services downtown. I'm not sure if you guys heard of it or not, but it's a trucking services. Um, so she's an agent that provides services for all the truck drivers and opens companies. She's been in business for a good fifteen years already. Um, also, me and her have another collateral, which again, is just, um, we still haven't thoroughly paid that off just yet, but it's, um. A realty, a property right across the, the high school as well. So it used to be called the Eastways Professional Services. So me and her, we, we purchased that a few years back as well.
For the questions?
Yeah.
More questions, go ahead. Um, have you ever had a restaurant or worked with food before?
Um, to be honest with you, I've never owned a restaurant before. I've worked as a waitress, yes. Um, I've managed my sister's business for fifteen years. So I know how to run it. I know how to manage it. Um, I've also for another fifteen, well, the same fifteen years, I've also managed my dad's business. So he's also has a company of transportation services. So I've been doing that for the past fifteen years. So knowing how to run and manage and everything like that, yeah, I do have a really strong background of it. Um, but coming to a restaurant, yeah, you know, it's something different, but I feel like, um, I feel ready for it. Uh, again, I feel like it's gonna, it's gonna go great for me. Since I really enjoy that, you know, industry.
Councillor Hart?
I was just curious, your, your, uh, your assets you put down here as collateral is seventy, seventy thousand?
Seven hundred, so that is.
Excuse me, always drop a number there.
You're fine, you're fine.
Sorry, I meant seven hundred thousand.
Correct. So, uh, on this one, you're just looking at mine. That's just my application. So the seven hundred is the one that we have together as a realty. And then, um, she has full collateral, I wanna say five hundred, six hundred that she already owns. She was paid off completely.
A second question too, I've, when you were talking to the commission, you said that you were only planning on being open part-time.
Correct, which is just on the weekends. We don't plan to open all week. So my weekends is considered Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So we would just be off for three days.
Are you currently open?
At the moment, no, we're actually trying to project this weekend, hopefully. Um, I didn't get together with the ribbon, can you move like that just yet, but if it's not gonna be this Saturday as a soft opening, it's gonna be next week for sure of the grand opening.
Further questions?
Ms. Ripley?
Um. Dang, I just lost it. Oh, were we gonna put this, um. On hold until after the retreat? Were we, did we talk about that?
We.
If not, I think it would.
We were gonna take item by item, so.
Okay.
Whatever it comes down to.
It might be good to do it until after the retreat. We were gonna go over some things at the retreat.
You have a motion?
Are you gonna make the motion?
A motion that we table this until after the retreat, till the next meeting. Next council meeting.
That was second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by councillor Ripley to table this until the next council meeting and a second by councillor Hart. Any debate?
I, may I?
Go ahead councillor.
Uh, okay, so, so what are the plans? Because I feel like we really need to be transparent with, um, with the community members about the, the, about why we are tabling. Again, I, I've been saying this throughout our, our time here, why we're doing this. Um, and if we expect them to come back again, this is, you know, their, their time, this is our time as well. And I wanna make sure that we're using all of our times efficiently.
I'm thinking of, for going through the ARPA money, there might be more to give to her. After we find out from the retreat. And that's, it was, yeah, it was a good thought.
Deputy Mayor, if I, if I may, I think, so there's basically three parts that they wanna look at. One part is, they need to make sure the contract lines up with the resolution, whether you're an LLC or sole proprietor, that the names go to this, the, the matchup. So the attorney has a little bit of work to do. The other part is just like, uh, councillor just said. Um, they need to look at the funds. There's funds there for the smaller amount, but they may be able to approve you for a full amount. And so they wanna take that into consideration. And then I think, um, that, that was pretty much my two points, I think, so. So you're clear, they're not nine?
Yeah, that is totally fine. But if I can just, uh, let you guys know my perspective, like through this whole process. I really want you guys to see if you guys can actually like all get together on the same page. One, because when I went to applied, I absolutely had no help. I tried asking Sydney. She was, she was amazing. Don't get me wrong. She was amazing on trying to get everything down with me, but as in like. Answering the question on a specific detail, I couldn't get that. Now, I do know how hard it was to upload those things. I mean, I'm so good at technology, okay, don't get me wrong. Um, but I feel like with someone that doesn't know technology, yes, it's gonna be very complicated. So if you guys can find somebody, and again, that's totally fine. But everything that you guys asked for was amazing. I mean, I never knew about it, you know, a business plan. I did it. Um, I feel like, you know, again, I didn't know anything about that, so I feel like anybody can do it. Um, but it comes in terms as in like the process of it. I wasn't aware there was gonna be like a second step to this. I knew that there was gonna be a meeting with the commissioners, I believe. That's the first meeting that I went to. After that, that's when until I was, uh, told that there was gonna be another process to that. So I still had to wait. So if I would have known that from the start, I would have been like, you know what, let me start with giving another loan, you know? A bigger loan, cuz I already had my own, own, you know, withdrawal, whichever, my own personal money, which was totally fine. But again, just like what amount that I could have gotten at first instead, because I needed to get all of that. Yes, there's credit cards, but. If I can avoid the credit card rates to get a smaller rate, then I would do that and get a bigger chunk of it until I waited until this process was done. So, and now, and again, don't get me wrong, you know, you guys need to decide this, which is fine, but coming back again. For me, I have no problem, but I feel for other applicants, they might be really, really upset about that. Because again, it's just like, we're not told this at the beginning of it. If we would have known, totally, it would be fine.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate the input, uh, Ms. Gomez. Definitely a learning curve. It's the first time we're doing this.
Oh, total. And that's the, I'm, I'm, too, and I respect all of you guys' decision and I respect how you guys are even trying to help the community. That is great. It's just that, just knowing those little process, then I would have just been able for me personally to be able to move things and. Get loans where I needed to get or get the right amount of loan that I needed it. So now, yeah, and, um. You know, credit card after credit card, which is like thirty percent, thirty-five percent, you know? But if I knew I could have gotten a personal loan, maybe a little bit lower and a bigger chunk of it, where I could waited this whole period of a month or two months, that would have been fine.
And I just, you know, this is really good information for, for the commission, the commissions. This is our first, first time going through this whole revolving loan.
Yeah.
Uh, process. So what you're saying is, is very well taken. Um, especially the aspect of having better technical support for applicants. And I know that the commissioners have talked about that at various times before, that knowing that, uh, even some of our other applicants, applications are a little bit unwieldy.
Of course.
So, yeah, so I think that, uh, thank you for, for bringing that to our attention.
No, no, of course. I mean, even if it's just written on the paper that you guys give us, like this is how long it's gonna take, this is how many steps it's gonna take. Again, it's fine. All the information that you guys asked for was right there, so we didn't need to submit everything that we needed to. And it's either A, you, um, put it all, cuz you need, you want that loan, or if you're gonna slack and not do, uh, an application, not submit it, or not do a business plan. Or not submit some information, then that's on you. You really don't want this up, this revolving loan then.
When, when did you start the process?
I started, I wanna say in the beginnings of May. But I, I'm, I'm actually even thankful cuz they told me that I was gonna go into June twenty-fourth for a meeting. So they told me that, um, June tenth, and I was like, okay, great, two weeks before, so I'm okay.
Yeah.
Is there, go ahead?
Oh, I just, I just wanna, thank you for that. Thank you, because this is the feedback we need. Um, uh, in, and, and I hope, uh, we, councillor Hart actually sits on, on, and you, you probably met her as well. So this is all great feedback that we get to bring back to them, because there's always room for improvement everywhere. Oh, of course. And, you know, this, this project started as, as a help and as a lending hand to community, eh, to community. And we wanna make sure it also feels that way, right? So when I say our applicants, whenever they need support. Yeah. Truly mean that we also need to figure out how we can best support, um, applicants through the process. So even. You know, those bits and pieces of information from an applicant's perspective are gonna make a world of a difference because now we get to take it back. So I really appreciate that. Thank you for your patience. Oh, thank you. And I hope that none of this, you know, delayed you back so much, but. Like, uh, city manager slash chief just mentioned a little bit ago, where, where this is just some technicalities occurred. And I keep saying, I wanna be transparent. So you all know, we're not shutting you down, but we're just gonna revisit things a little bit. Oh, no. And hopefully, hopefully with, with it coming back to serve you even a little bit. No, of course. And like I said, if I, I've been, again, managing a business for more than fifteen years. So the thing is for me, I take a criticism. Good, cuz that's how I can improve. So I love feedback. And if I can do that to everybody else, you know? And hopefully, you know, they can take it well and sign off some of them cats. So it's okay. But I just wanted to give you guys my perspective of the whole process, but it, cuz again, it, it is new. Um, it was something new for me too, so, um, but I thank you guys so much for your time. And of course, if you guys need to come back, I will definitely come back again.
Well, just make sure you have council specials. I'm teasing.
Council special, definitely. I'll put that on the liquor specialty.
They really can't do that. That's a, that's a joke.
Pro quo, uh, at all.
Guys, um, thank you, Ms. Gomez. I'm sure Ms. Horner will reach out to you if she has any further questions.
Yeah, sounds good.
Councillor, is there any more debate on this? Item? Hearing none, I am favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Everybody voting?
Oh.
To table.
To table, yes, aye.
All opposed, no?
Lost in the woods.
The ayes have it, um, we'll table this until further notice.
Okay, thank you. Fully soon.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um.
Yes, sorry?
In, in, in regard to, to the tailored footwear, are we gonna be treating that the same way? Okay, good. I think, I think so, because I think she kinda walked away thinking she wasn't gonna get any money at all and. Okay.
Thank you.
Cuz I got a little, I got a little anxious there. Thank you.
Okay, uh, councillor, let's move on. Uh, item D, letter C and movement event. Um, councillor. Rostam, I'm forgot your name.
Happens every November and it's okay. Um, council, my fellow, fellow council members, um, city manager. Um, we, as per discussion during session, um, and we're in collaboration with, uh, Save the Children to bring to Sunnyside. Hopefully at the Sunnyside Community Center, a summer event for families and children. Um, and as the summary states, uh, the objective of this event is to create spaces, uh, for children or to create a space for children zero to twelve. Uh, and their parents or caregivers to promote healthy living literacy and connections. Um, and the reason why I'm bringing it forth is because, um, again, per previous conversation, I would love for the city to sponsor this. Events, since it is happening at the Sunnyside Community Center. Uh, the goal with, uh, the event is really to get, uh, families centering healthy living. So we wanna partner up with the entire community, if that's our firefighters, our law enforcers to come and play some dodgeball with the kids. Uh, reaching out to, um, uh, the Yakima Valley Libraries to hopefully bring their mobile library. Uh, over and, and get kids and their families, um, uh, applying to, uh, for library cards. Um, connecting with, uh, the Sunnyside High School. Uh, basketball, uh, teams, volleyball teams. And really anything else that we can think of. I know that I mentioned, uh, we were thinking of, of doing a dunking booth, so. Uh, hopefully we can get some brave council members out there, uh, to get dunked really just. For the fun and the engagement, um, part of all of this, because it really truly, uh, takes a village to bring us all together. And like I said before, we, we live in times where a lot, a lot of things, you know, tears apart, but we definitely hold common ground. Then we can all agree that we wanna make sure that what we do is continue investing in, in our youth, continue investing in families. And making sure that, you know, our community feels the presence of community leaders, um, and community supporters along the way. Um, so, um, again, this is the idea. Um, uh, also leading all my fellow council members, if y'all have any other ideas to bring to the table. We are all, um, open to it. Um, obviously, y'all's input will make this. Event even that much more robust and engaging and even more of a pleasant experience for a community. Uh, the tentative date is, uh, Thursday, August fifteenth, from around five to eight PM. Um, again, at the commu, at Sunnyside Community Center. So more information to come. If, of course, this gets approved, um, and I believe, Mr. Riley, we have to maybe amend some of the language. Um, instead of, uh, waiving the fee, I believe it's a term of four classification.
Since I think you're just gonna put a motion on the record for the minutes, you just need to make a motion that the city sponsor this event.
Perfect, okay.
And before we do that, councillor, do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Rostam?
I like the idea. I think it's a good one.
And I really want this to be a community effort. So if y'all have any ideas and thoughts, I'm definitely gonna be reaching out to local businesses. Um, so, yeah, this is, this is an all-together thing. No dunking?
One more dunking.
Can't swim.
What, what day is this? August what?
Thursday, August fifteenth.
I think I'm gonna be out of town.
Oh, I think you're avoiding the dunking booth.
I'm going camping with the youth, actually.
Councillor, any, uh, any more questions?
I'd like to, to, um. Uh, authorize the interim city manager to create a, this as a city-sponsored event. Wait, um, for the, uh, at the community center for the literacy movement and for, with injunction with Save the Children.
Thank you, Ms. Hart, for reading that. Um, Lee.
I'll second it.
Can get that?
Hopefully Jackie got it.
I have a, a motion by councillor Hart and a second by councillor Ripley. Um, is there any debate?
No, but I just wanna make sure that the word wave is, we avoid that word.
I didn't use it at all in my, in my, uh, I used the word city-sponsored, I think.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, no? The ayes have it. And we move on.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
So, let me write this down quick. Items from council members, um, mayor's appointment for boards and commissions.
We haven't met till.
We have, no, well, is the plan still to? Monday after the, after the retreat?
The rules committee will meet after the retreat and, and examine the, uh, uh. The Rules Committee will meet after the retreat and, and examine the, uh, uh, nomination to the applicants so far that we've received.
And after the meeting, we'll, uh, we'll see what's left to fill, and, uh, our city clerk put that out for the public to apply. Um, other reports, announcements, and or questions by counsel. We'll start with Counselor Beeler.
Nothing to report?
Counselor Vasquez.
Yeah, so the first one is gonna be an invitation to Sunnyside Lions fundraiser dinner. I sent it to Jackie. I don't know if she was able to get it up there. But it's a fire, and it's Sunnyside Lions fundraiser dinner. It's gonna be this Thursday, June thirteenth. From five P M to seven P M. At the, the address is fourteen hundred Federal Way at the Sunnyside Singer Center. And they'll be serving chicken fettuccine, alfredo, Caesar salad, dessert, and a drink, all included. And it's going to be fifteen dollars a plate. You guys could either eat inside, or you guys could take it out and eat it at your home for dinner. So I encourage us all to go, at least pick up a plate and let's support our Sunnyside Lions. Because everything that they get, they always give it back to the community, so it's really great to be able. Enjoying meal and knowing that you're also contributing to Sunnyside. And with that being said, I also wanted to say congratulations to all of our seniors that graduated this weekend. It was great. I was able to attend all, some of the graduations, even grand views, and it was just a really busy weekend. But congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty-four for graduating, for being able to walk that stage. And from my part and on behalf of the city council, we wish you all the very best. Near future, wherever you, wh- whatever university, college you go to, or whatever you decide to do. Keep dreaming big and never, ever take no for an answer, and never let anyone stop you or hold you down, because everything is possible. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ripley?
Yeah, I went to a, it was a seminar up in Yakima, and, uh, it was about a DUI court. And it was really interesting. They're trying to, you know, instead of just throwing them in jail and then letting them out after their thirty days. They're, they're getting them into treatment. And this treatment is really working. There was judges there, there was the sheriff there, there was the, um. Oh, the treatment, uh, what is that? I can't remember the name, but there was a lot of people there, and they each had their own little thing to say. They were all part of the. Of the, um, helping them, and it sounded like a real good, a real good, uh, way to go. Because at least they're trying something, and some of them, they had a couple guys there who had been in the treatment court. And, uh, they stuck with it, and then the ones that didn't, they didn't come to talk about it. But the majority of them is, it's pretty, it's a pretty good, uh. Treatment rate, eighty percent of them don't go back, and it was really interesting.
Where do they don't go back to?
They don't go back to drinking.
I thought you meant to court.
Well, I can't tell you.
Okay, sorry.
Is that out, Counselor? That's it. Counselor Rostam.
Um, yeah, I actually have a question for the city manager. So I got, um, a few phone calls just earlier today about some folks selling, like, flags. Um, out in front of the Dollar Tree. I didn't go and see, um, but, um, I, I did get a lot of messages about it. And I let them know that I was gonna ask today during council. We can get this on the record.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Riley. He's the one that advised us on this.
This, this was, uh, the same individual we had a court case with last year, um, involved. This is the same individual we had a court case with last year. Uh, i- in order to sell, um, items in the right of way in the city, you have to obtain a, a permit from the city to do so. Uh, unless it's considered political speech of some sort. Um, this individual apparently is doing nothing except distributing, um, political memorabilia for one particular candidate. For office, so as a result of the, uh, decision last year that we had in the situation, their, their ability to do this is protected. So, um, if, if this individual was selling Seahawks memorabilia along with political stuff, then it's considered to be commerce. So, um, as of now, as long as they have permission to be on the property they're at to do this, um, they're, they're free to. Distribute this memorabilia. As of now.
Whose property are they on, actually?
I don't know. I, I, my understanding was it on the city right of way somewhere, um, so.
They're in the strip of grass between Yak Valley Highway and the, uh, and the pathway, and that's city property, so.
Did they get permission?
They didn't obtain a permit, no, but the court ruled last year that it was political speech. And as a result, their First Amendment right, um, protects their ability to do this.
Okay.
This is all being appealed and decided in a higher court still at this point, but as of now, that's what the rule of law is for that.
Okay.
So, w- what happened is our sergeant went over there and code enforcement. And because we've dealt with this in the past, we called Mr. Riley and, and, uh, th- that's what the ruling is. So that's what we have to abide by for now.
If this extends to, um, uh, anything beyond political speech, then, then the permit issue will come back up at this point.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
And then, Ms. Counselor?
Uh, that was it for me.
Okay, uh, myself, I just wanna thank our city clerk Jackie for all the social media, uh, stuff that you've been doing. All the outreach, all the information, um, that's out there definitely helps, you know, eliminate questions that the public might have. Um, and that's, that's it for me.
Yeah, I was, uh, receiving some information about when the pool was going to be opening. I understand there's some issues with the pump. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, today, I, I got some information from city staff on an update on the pump. Um, it's still what was at last week. The, the tech, the, the shaft was broke into several pieces. So they're waiting for the shaft to arrive, so that they can put it back together, and then we can get it back. But that's the update that I have, is that, um, it's still waiting for that part to show up. Um, they were supposed to reach out again to the supplier, um, and see if they can put a urgency on it. Um, but at this point, um, everybody, every organization that is being affected by the swimming pool has been notified about this. So we're just waiting to, to hear more if there's any changes, and then we'll update them as, as we know.
Is there any kind of a targeted date for?
Well, not, not to, you know, to, we know for sure, but the, the, the tech had said that. They were hoping they could have everything completed by the end of this week. But that's obviously if the parts showed up and, and everything, so, um, we're still waiting on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That is my heart, Ms. Hart.
Oh, I did, did have another question. There was a, there's a, um, piece of, uh, sidewalk over on South, uh, Fourth Street. It's, uh, I don't know if it's, it's kind of got beat up a bit when the S V I D was doing some. Uh, there was some work being done on the street there in conjunction with S V I D. They had a broken pipe up the hill, and somehow or other, the sidewalk in that area also got, uh, kinda banged up pretty bad. There's cones around it. I'm not sure if S V I D has to fix it, or if it's a city project, but it's on South Fourth there. By where those apartments are, those senior apartments are. Yeah, I thank you. There's a lot of speeders and down that street, and they have a lot of fun going over that. Big, nice piece of, in the road way.
All right.
But that's, 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 that's a, uh, technical term.
Mr. Sanchez understood the transition.
Yeah.
Upcoming council meetings, um, I'm city clerk.
So our next meeting is a special meeting, which is a retreat from ten A M to three P M on June seventeenth. We will be discussing city council priorities and receive an ARPA update. The next one would be June twenty-fourth. Again, these two, I, uh, public works items will depend on, um. Response from Department of Health and an implementation plan on the rate, um, rate analysis, correct? Okay, so those may be pushed back, and then I don't know if you wanna discuss proclamations for the next few months. But that would maybe be a good time to discuss drafting those.
On the seventeenth, Ms. Renteria?
On the twenty-fourth, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, understood. Thank you.
Hey, counsel, just remember that we have any items to each other, um, city clerk. Um, items from department heads, um, Mr. City Manager. I'll start down at the end with Ms. Norrell.
Good evening, city council. Um, just to give you a brief update on our open recruitments. So we have the community and economic development director position open on the website, as well as the recreation coordinator. Uh, both are currently, um, open active recruitments. Um, we are in the interview process for the dispatcher position and the summer rec aid positions. Um, corrections officers, we just completed the testing this past Saturday. Um, so once we get those results back, we'll know, uh, the next steps for that process as well. And we are still working through the entry level P D list, um, that was certified earlier this year. And that's where we're at with all of our open recruitments.
Thank you, Ms. Norrell. Yes, Counselor?
Um, it, it's been a while since, and I know we all got an email, but it's been a while since we got any updates in public. You know, just for, just for the record about, um, uh, the status of, of the, the city manager applications and where we're at. Would you be able to share a little bit?
So the most recent email, not sure if you saw it last week, the, uh, Colin Basinger, the recruitment firm that we are working with. Um, did let us know that that recruitment had closed. I believe they had a total. I believe more than ten people applied for the city manager, uh, position with about six that they believed that looked, that looked good on paper. So they are currently, um, conducting all of the, uh, background reviews and reports, and those will be sent to us via email. Um, hopefully by the nineteenth, so that we can all review and decide next steps that we wanna take. So hopefully here, by next week, we'll be seeing some information and.
Okay.
Have a better idea of the next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Norrell.
Are you excited, Rob?
Good evening. Uh, right now, I T sitting with a queue of about seventy tickets, uh, waiting to get worked on. We closed out about twenty-five last week. Um, some of you may know that there was a power outage, uh, this Saturday. We were down for roughly six hours. That was because of older gear and stuff like that, taking the hard down. When the battery backups and everything else finally ran out of juice. Uh. To solve that, we are trying to get the generator replaced. That's still in the process, so, uh, Rawl and Andrew are both working very hard with that. To get that going for us. Uh, security wise, we're still working on getting our desktops and Duo and stuff like that, uh, updated and implemented, so. Something we'll work on there, and then, uh, that's about all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Renteria.
Um, I did send everyone an email with the updated ARPA report. I apologize for not getting that in the council packet ahead of time. But I'm happy to answer questions, um, on those items, or if you have anything, you please reach out and send me an email. We are still in the process of our new software implementation, so, um. I was wrong last, at the last meeting, cause I thought we would have new reports, but we actually use the old system through the end of May. So at the next one, hopefully we'll have new reports for you, but software implementation is a real bear, so this has been a very stressful couple of weeks. Um, I wanted to let you know that our judge did enter into a new contract for interpreter services. With another company called Queensgate Interpreting Services. And so some of those issues that we were having with the, um, the trials and canceling those, those interpreters. Um, hopefully will be resolved with this new contract that we have put in place, so just to give you an update on that. Um, and then I also just wanted to mention, um, Ms. Ripley, you were talking about the therapeutic courts. That is something that we are, um, working on with our court, and we're hoping to do at least use some of the opioid money that we get. Um, to, to do some of that. It is kind of a long-term process and putting, uh, something into place, but it is definitely on the court administrator's radar. Um, it's something she's really passionate about, so, um, and I know she, I don't know if she, uh, addressed it on Law Day. Um, a couple of weeks ago when, um, we had that, but it is something that is, is definitely, um, on her priority list.
Good.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Good evening, counsel. Um, I, well, one of the updates I was gonna give you was on the pool pump, and I already did that, so I'm gonna go to the next one. Um, I just wanted to let you know, um, Morning Rotary, uh, for a while, has been working on a place to ho- to house. Uh, some, uh, skateboarding, uh, reclaimed, uh. Ramps, and so after reviewing different parks, uh, Sunnyview Park was the most logical. Because of what's already there, and then doing something right next to it. So Rotary will be doing another concrete pad right next to it, where it'll, it'll house the rest of it. Um, they, they informed me that they, they wanna start this Wednesday. Uh, the contractor was out there today looking at the, uh, area, just to see what else they need to do there. Um, but that's, just wanted to update you on that. Uh, it's a small project, it's just a concrete pad, and then they'll be able to mow bin the, uh, the equipment. Uh, this equipment, it was, uh, brought in from, uh, another city.
Cleelum, um, got rid of their skate park, and they knew that the Sunnyside Rotary had put two in previously. Got ahold of them and asked them if they were interested in the equipment. They said sure, so Sunnyside Rotary, along with a couple of volunteers, uh, went up to Cleelum. And took the equipment down, and they've been storing it since, and just waiting for a location to put it all back together. So it's the, the ramps and the skate park. It's a small skate park, but it'll go in conjunction with the one that's out there.
Yep, so anyways, that's, that's coming right along, so hopefully that'll be completed soon. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, I know that we've been talking about, uh, our survey of how many soccer fields we have. In, in town. I'm just wondering, has anything been done on the Tina North, uh, park? I didn't, I didn't see any restrooms or anything out there, or any pool, um, soccer equipment, making it. Letting people know that, that that's what that's for.
Well, it's, it's still, yeah, it's a soccer field. There's, there's goals out there that were still, I think, tied up to the fence, or they could be used for. It's.
I guess I just didn't see those.
Yeah, that, that was used for that last year. As far as the restrooms, it's part of the, one of the things that we had for ARPA. Is to try to see if we can get some restrooms out there allocated with some of the ARPA money.
Right, yeah, I saw that when I was read- reading the ARPA. That's what ma- made me think of it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is that underway?
So we've caught, no, it's, it's gonna take a while. So it's, it's, we've been contacting different companies that do this style of, of restrooms. Um, but even if we were to agree on one of them already, um, it would, we'd be looking at somewhere next year. But that's part of the, the ARPA. As long as we allocated it to something, we're under contract, it's part of the, uh, part of the process. But none of them would be able to have one. It has to go through engineering and design and, um, those steps. So it, it would be months out.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, may I reclaim some time?
Go ahead.
Sorry, eh, eh, yeah, Ms. Hart, uh, Counselor Hart just mentioned the soc- soccer field. And, and this is something that I wanted to, to ask counsel, cause Ca- Counselor Hart and I had a, had a conversation about. Uh, maybe the potential of developing, uh, just some sort of task force or group where we can come and actually do some brainstorming. Around the development of soccer fields around town, and I think you've been in the conversation, or maybe you haven't, uh, Mr. Sanchez. But of identifying specific areas around the city that where we can either, um, work on the development. Or maybe work on, you know, on some of the, um, keeping, um, or upkeeping of some of these fields, like the Tina North Park. For example, and or if we're gonna decide if we're gonna put permanent goalposts out there versus bringing them into, onto the fields. Uh, per diem, or whenever, you know, the kids are, whoever, or the teams are, are going to be using them. But I really just wanted to get this conversation started. Obviously, we don't have to elaborate on it now, since we're at the end. Uh, but I do wanna, uh, I do wanna put this on the record, so we can all start figuring out how we move forward. Um, with some of the community concerns that have been raised, and even today. Um, had another member talking about the importance of soccer.
Is that something that, uh, you, you're in Parks and Recs, right? Commission, is that something that maybe in Parks and Recs?
We've, think we've started the conversation there, so we can.
Just to add to that. Yes, and some of the conversations that I've heard, and I agree that soccer is a big thing in the valley here. And, and just mowing fields for nothing, I think is really a waste of time. If, I mean, if we can do something, um, I, I agree. As long as it's a, it's an area that would fit a, a soccer area and, and what it would take, I'm, I would support that. And but add something that rec, yeah, would be part of, um, whether, yeah, looking at options, whether, you know. Removable goalposts, or do we, do permanent, what are the pros and cons of each one, what are? or do we do permanent, what are the pros and cons of each one, what are the costs, um, maintenance, whatnot? Um, but those are things that we can, yeah, obviously go over and, and figure out.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Thank you so much.
Sanchez. Ben?
Oh, you've been keeping us on track, so that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, and Corey. Nothing. Okay, um, oh, yeah.
Okay, so I will be at Music in the Park with a little table, sharing information about boards and commission vacancies. So, um, just so you guys know, um, also, I wanted to let you know that instead of two links for the study session and the regular meeting, I'm just doing one because the five minutes in between each meeting doesn't allow me time to set up everything and assign the interpreter. So that means that instead of two recordings, you'll just have one. So if you're watching the playback, it's, it's both meetings in one. Also, I'm not sure if Councilor Hart was gonna bring it up, but I think, um, can you, oh, you were gonna leave it to me, okay. So A W C is having a, their business meeting on June twentieth and we can have up to three voting delegates. So if you would like to select the three or two, however many, um, and also who is going to participate in the parade of flags, you would just submit the, turn in the city flag during registration, so.
Counsel? Who's going so far? Vas- Council Vasquez? Ripley?
The meeting is on June twentieth from four to five forty-five, so whoever can attend.
Well, I think we're all gonna be there, so we, we better attend, right?
So it is worthwhile going to, um, I think that's where a lot of the voting goes on, the, the election of, uh, a couple of folks. Um, so, yeah, but you need to have your voting delegates to, in order to, to vote.
And there's three?
And there's, there's three, apparently there's three. And you just need to, amongst yourselves, is who's gonna volunteer to be the delegate and everybody says yes and that's okay and, ooh, you're off.
Any of you interested in delegates?
Oh, we need three. We have the three here now. You, myself. Oh, actually, that's four. Sorry, this is why I did not, I did not major. I did.
Math is way off.
This is why I went into policy, not science or math.
I'm willing. I'll, I'll do it.
I'll do it too.
So all three, all three of you?
No, go for it, George.
Me? Okay.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do the, do you wanna do the flag? The walk?
It's heavy. Don't, don't volunteer for that.
No, I got a bad back.
Yeah, let, let, uh.
Yeah, I mean, if I can hold it.
Well, you guys should walk with him, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but only one person really needs to.
Okay, and then.
It's a parade.
Yeah, we mailed out the flag. We would take it with us.
You don't have to take it.
Maybe, yeah, I'll, I'll do the flag. Everybody else walking with.
Everybody else just walk with you.
We'll see.
The voting, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the flag, I guess I'll take it from here after the.
Well, no, no, they have, uh, yeah, you're just picking. She'll fix it up.
Yeah, Monday after the retreat. Okay.
Also, Mr. Beeler is.
Just gonna reach out if.
See if he might go.
Yeah, see if he might go. Is that right, Mr. Beeler?
I've got one employee and he's off the twentieth, the twenty-first, twenty-second.
So that's, uh, the question. All right, um, City Manager?
Okay, I got a couple of things. So, um, the music on Wednesdays, this, uh, like to see, uh, council there if they have time. It's from eleven thirty to one thirty. Um, we have a country artist this Wednesday. Uh, Movie in the Park from the Police Foundation is this Friday at, uh, seven P M. A lot of community support stepping up on that, so we're looking forward to having that this Friday. Um, graduation went well. We had one, uh, little hiccup, but, uh, the, the people were removed. Um, and then I'm off next week, so the Monday meeting, I'll, I'll be attending by Zoom, so. Other than that.
You're gonna zoom in?
Zoom in. Other than that, stand for questions.
Any questions, counsel?
Okay, I'll check, look my cheat sheet again here.
All right, um, executive session. Consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Uh, if I may ask the public to please exit, and we'll, we have it for twenty-five minutes.
Can I amend the R C W to include, um, R C W forty-two, thirty, one, ten, one, I, which is also potential litigation in addition to the real estate, just to put that on the record.
One, I.
Was it one, ten, uh?
Can you repeat that R C W, Ms. Warner?
Yeah, forty-two, thirty, one, ten, one, I, in addition to C, which is already on the agenda.
We just had to add the I.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any action?
Is there any, uh, any action? We expect them?
You can exit the movie now. Thank you. What time was the movie Friday night? Okay, thank you. I'll be out of town, but I will, uh, swing by this Wednesday. Yeah, I'll bring my lunch.
And no, no action, uh, was taken. Um, so that being said, there be no further business to come before council without objection. I adjourn this meeting at eight sixteen P M.